Good evening, everyone. This is the December 4th meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members. Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here. Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here. Councilor Nowoselski. Here. Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers.
He's here.
Here. Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here. Council Vice President Keith is absent. And Chairman Dino.
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Point of personal privilege.
Seated point, Counselor.
I just would like to announce that the Beachmont Improvement Committee is having their annual Christmas tree lighting on Sunday, December 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the community park at Douglas-Cumming Square. And everybody's invited, if you'd like to attend. It's a really great time. Thank you.
Great point, Counselor. Looking forward to it.
Calendar item number two. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of November 27th, 2017.
All in favor.
Calendar item number three. Council Order 17-423. HYM will conduct a presentation relative to Suffolk Downs' development proposal.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll invite HYM to present their presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor. I'm sorry. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear back before all of you tonight. We're really pleased to be here. We have a short presentation, if it's okay. I think this is going to be on the TV as I speak, if that's all right. And I'd love to just give you an update. The purpose of our visit here today is Council Rotundo, I think, filed an order approximately two weeks ago asking HYM to appear before the council and for us to kind of give an update of where we are on Suffolk Downs. We're more than happy to do that, more than happy to appear in front of the council as often as you folks would like. If the Counselor's order is accepted, I think it was, he asked for us to come back once a month, we're happy to do that as well. So if it's okay, Counselor, I'm happy to just launch right in and do a presentation.
Absolutely. I think they have you hooked up, so you're ready to go.
Terrific. Okay. So again, we are the HYM Investment Group. I think you folks all know us very well. I'm going to advance it, I think, myself. There we go. So this is a little bit more about us. We're the folks, as you well know, who are responsible for the redevelopment of the Government Center Garage, the big ugly garage in the midst of downtown Boston. We're also the people who are responsible for the development of New Balance, the New Balance site on the Massachusetts Turnpike, the new headquarters building, the Bruins' practice facility, the new residential building that's going up there. We're responsible for the redevelopment of North Point in East Cambridge. We took that on in 2010. There's a new investor group that's involved in that, but we're still on that transaction. And then we purchased Suffolk Downs in May of this year. We've been working on it for over a year. I'm here with my partner Doug Mans. We, the two of us, represent our firm and all the work that we deal across the board on all those different projects. What we really specialize in is working on these kinds of large, complicated transactions, and certainly Suffolk Downs is one of these. We've assembled a great team of people. CBT is our master plan architect, and they work on a variety of different projects like this all around the world. They're based here in Boston. They know quite well how to work on this sort of project, and they also work well with us. We're used to working with them. STAS is our landscape architect. STAS is a very strong firm with a great expertise in water infiltration, climate change, and those sorts of things. So we chose them after a strong competition, and they've been terrific with us so far. We also have PCA with us, Preloj Talinski. They're the architect for us on the retail portion. You'll hear this more from us, but the most important thing for getting this site redeveloped well is to get the retail right. We're about creating a mixed-use project here on the site, and we want to get the retail right so it feels great as people walk down the street and have a nice place to enjoy a meal, or go shopping, or whatever that is, and PCA will help us with that. VHB is also part of the team. They help us with consulting on all the permitting issues. And then Beals &amp; Thomas and other firms are part of our group. There's a whole, large group of people who are part of this as well. That's just representative of this slide that lists the folks who are involved with us. There are a series of site opportunities and challenges. You folks would know them, I think, quite well. One of the key things, though, is there's a significant amount of open space already on the site that encompasses some wetlands, some areas of water that we really can use to create a great open space system. As you'll no doubt note from the different meetings that we've had with you, and just remember that we're committed to providing open space to 25% of the site, so that's 40 acres. It's a huge amount of open space, and we can use the wetlands to be part of that as well. In addition to that, we've got terrific Blue Line access. There are two Blue Line stations, as you folks well know, on the site. Beachmont Station and Suffolk Downs Station. These can become our front door, and they become a big part of why this site can work with us over time. We're bookended by some great neighborhoods. As Councilor McKenna knows, the Beachmont neighborhood, and all of you well know, is one piece of our border, and the other piece is Orient Heights on the other side in East Boston. So we're bookended already by some great neighborhoods as we look out. And in addition to that, there are some terrific off-site assets, as you folks again well know. There's a, there are beach assets from Revere Beach back to Constitution Beach. There's a Belle Isle Marsh, which is one of the most important saltwater marshes, urban saltwater marshes, still in the Northeast. And there's a variety of other green and off-site amenities that we want to connect this site to. It's been disconnected from those places for too long, and the chance is there for us to reconnect them. What exists today are some of the challenges that you folks know well, too. There are some, you know, pieces of the site in which we are disconnected from the surrounding neighborhoods, and we prevent people from getting to our site or getting from our site elsewhere. So the Blue Line tracks on the southern side of the site certainly are a disconnect that do not allow pedestrians, or vehicles, or bikes to get over to our site. In addition to that, the oil tanks that are on the other side, those two are a barrier to people getting over to the other side. And it's never really been a site that while people might have gone to a horse race, or maybe have seen the, seen the green space in the middle, it's never been a site that people have walked. I'm more than happy to host people on a walk, if you'd like. We've done some of those already. I think Councilor McKenna did one of those with us. We've done a number of them already in East Boston. We're happy to do more of those with people. Certainly, as the weather gets a little bit more dicey, it becomes a little harder, but we'll have time in the spring as well, if people would like to do that. So what's our development vision? What do we want to do? This is 161-acre site. It's a big, huge site. It's one of the biggest, frankly, in eastern Massachusetts that is subject to this kind of redevelopment. And our vision is six-fold. These are the, kind of, the six principles that we would bring. The first is, this must be a mixed-use district. This must be a district that has a mix of retail, of hotels, of commercial, of job-producing opportunities, and residential. I've said on more than one occasion, it needs to become a place where people feel comfortable living, and a place where people feel comfortable shopping and being and enjoying a meal, and then we can attract the large kinds of commercial tenants to it as well. It's got to have great open space. So in the middle, upper piece there, it's got to have great open space. As I said, 25% of the site, we believe, should be dedicated to open space, or 40 acres, and that's a key piece of it for us. It's got to have neighborhood retail. So up in the upper right-hand corner of this slide, you can see, that's our indication that that's kind of the most important piece of it. It's got to have retail that is small and neighborhood feeling, not a big Target store, but got to be, you know, neighborhood retail. If we do that right, if we set the table correct with those first three, then we can create economic development. Now, all of us have heard about Amazon and all the rest of it, and we've, I think, all of us collectively and individually have talked about Amazon. The Amazon process came crashing into our world on September the 7th. We're pursuing that whole process. As you folks well know, we did that in partnership with you and with the city of Austin. We're excited about the possibility, and we're moving forward with the Phase 1 building. As you may not, no doubt, have seen, we made that filing on Thursday of last week. We're trying to put ourselves in position that when Amazon calls us and says yes, this site will be ready to go. But we're not banking on it. We're still the same folks with the same proposal, the same idea around mixed use, with or without Amazon. And I'm happy to answer more questions about that later as well. In addition to that, you know, we thought carefully about this being a transit-oriented site, using the Blue Line and making sure that people are encouraged to use the Blue Line, but making those Blue Line stations our front door. And then obviously, thinking about the resiliency and sustainability. I'll talk more about that in a second. But the, but the idea is that we need to prepare this site for the potential of flooding in the future. Our world is changing. We need to be prepared for that, which we are. So what are our design strategies? These next slides kind of build up to the overall design in the, in the project. And you start, again, with those big natural assets that we have already, the wetlands that already exist. So Sales Creek, which kind of runs through the middle of the site, which also provides a significant portion of the border between Revere and East Boston, as well as the pond that's, that's kind of on the East Boston side, those are great assets for us to use and to make our, our base for the creation of the open space system. And then we want to create a connected network of open space that will run throughout the site. So this is a huge amount of open space that's going to run throughout the site. We want it to have a variety of different characteristics. So there can be some playing fields, there can be some more passive space, there can be places for people to read a book, or just take a walk, but we're really excited about it. And then we want to make that open space, make sure that it connects to those Blue Line stations. So Beachmont and Suffolk Downs need to be our front door. We want to make sure that people feel comfortable coming off those stations and making their way into the open space in the central part of the site. And then we want to create cross-connections across those, those two pieces of open space. That's making sure then, across the entire site, that people have, are accessed to the open space and not separated from it. But also, that gives us a chance to do some different things with those cross-connections. Some could be kind of an exercise piece. The whole width of the site, remember, is, there's one mile to go from one end of the site in Revere to the other side, side in, in East Boston. So it's a huge site. So we can take advantage of that by creating kind of exercise spots for, for people throughout the open space. And then we want to make north-south connections as well, to make sure that the site is prepared for the day. We believe there'll be a day when the, the business of the oil tanks will no longer be there. And it's not a today thing. It's not something that we can control because we don't own those pieces, but we want to set the site up for the potential of that day at some point in the future. And as we think that through, then we want to make sure that the site reconnects itself. And this is where we spent a lot of time with all of you. We, we want to make sure that we open this site up to make it fully connected to Beachmont. So one of the key things, I think, we can all envision easily is, when the fence comes down, and the horse barns come down, and that, and that piece of the site opens up, we can really make it much more a part of the Beachmont neighborhood. We're focused clearly on trying to make that work more effectively. We've worked hard to try, for example, to put a good offer in front of the owner of Beachmont Roast Beef, to see if we can acquire that. That's a spot that we think we just want to own to create a, a nice public plaza out there. We want to make sure that that can work to align the buses more effectively, so that the bus traffic works better, and make sure that there's a great pedestrian connection from that station into the site. So that's a key part for us. We want to make this a big civic endeavor. This isn't just about kind of working within our site, working with the four boundaries of our site, but making sure that we're, you know, creating something that connects to the neighborhood surrounding us. As we do that, then, then we can add the retail modes that are right in Beachmont, and we call the other piece Belle Isle. It's not quite, it's not, it's certainly not going to be Suffolk Downs T-stop in the future, and it's not quite Orient Heights. So we've kind of for now, no, called that Belle Isle Marsh, or Belle Isle Square, and we think of that as being our, our second big retail piece. And then you need to connect those two with a big Main Street. So the Main Street that would run from Beachmont all the way to Belle Isle Square, that's a walking area for retail as people walk through it. Just to give you a sense of scale of the retail, there'll be about 500,000 square feet of retail when we fully build this out, all along that stretch of the Main Street. An average restaurant, just as an example, is maybe a 5,000-square-foot restaurant. A huge restaurant is maybe a 10,000-square-foot restaurant. So if you divide that into the 500,000 square feet, there's a huge amount of individual retail pieces that will be all along that stretch. And we want to make sure that each one is interesting and, and unique for people. And then as we do that, then we can kind of think through the civic nodes that are along the way. So one of the things that we've thought about at Beachmont Station, as an example, is, we want to create an atmosphere in which commercial can thrive, commercial businesses can thrive, and young people in particular can gather and think about new ideas for businesses. So we've planned an innovation building there, kind of similar to what was created in the Seaport District in Boston, as a way that can allow people to gather, enjoy a cup of coffee, and think about new businesses, meet there, and, and hopefully create new businesses from there. In addition to that civic node, we've also thought about other civic nodes throughout the site, particularly in East Boston, and one other one just on the border of East Boston and Revere as well. Those can be music, they can be community centers, they can be a variety of different things. But we want to create something bigger than just us, or bigger than the site, something that includes a real nod toward civic engagement. And then as we do all that, then we can kind of create great opportunities for businesses to be located. So commercial locations throughout the site, particularly as we think through that Main Street District and how we create the commercial nodes throughout. Housing. So I know that housing is a big issue for, for Revere, but please know that as we think about this, this community as a place that can be a place where people can live, we want to create a variety of different types of housing. So it's not just apartments for us. It's also opportunities for homeownership, for people to have condominiums, for there to be townhouses that people can purchase, for there to be housing for people who are 55-plus. I'm 54 years old, so I'm getting to be the spot. Better create a place for my, my wife and myself, but we want to have a variety of different types of housing units as we, as we think these things through. So it's not just one type of housing, it's not just one type of person. We want to make it housing, and a real community that can house a variety of different people from all around. In addition to that, then that creates some key neighborhoods. The neighborhood that's closest to Orient Heights, kind of on the, on the western side, western side of this is kind of going to have a little bit more of a residential character. The piece in the middle and the Revere piece will have more of a commercial character. So our commitment to you, which is the same as the first day that we've met each of you, is that 50% of the site would be committed to commercial, and 50% would be committed to residential. So it's a huge nod toward, you know, toward where we are. We're excited to be able to, to deliver that as well. So as we think these things through and start to think through those connections, we're excited to start to work with you closely. There's also a variety of work, pieces of work to be done around transportation and, and that work. I'm happy to come back in January, if you'd like, and talk more specifically about our plans around transportation. That's a significant chunk of the work and the research that we've done so far. And we'll also, at that point, have a better sense of where the Commonwealth of Massachusetts would like us to continue to study, as well as the city of Revere and the city of Boston as well. So as we think this through, here's a sense of what this master plan starts to look like. And you can see on the screen, the, the master plan starts to lay out a variety of blocks that are centered around open space, retail, creating great streets, opportunities for people to, to walk, as I say, to shop, to, to find a meal. We want it to be a true community, a true mixed-use community, a place that people can really learn to, to live, to enjoy the retail, and then eventually to find jobs as well. It's a key part of who we are. This gives you a sense of, of the kind of place that we want to connect. This is Belle Isle Square, that, that allows you to kind of get a sense of the people-oriented way that we want to have the streets set up and the sidewalks set up, and the way we want to think about the first-floor retail and the commercial above. Commercial, that's an office building on the right, and a residential building on the left. In addition to that, this is Beachmont Square. That's the innovation center that we've described in the middle, right in the middle of that, of that piece. So that's a, a center that we think could be certainly commercial, but hopefully spawn more commercial ideas. So that's an idea that's similar to, as I said, the innovation center that's been created in the Seaport District in, in Boston as well, that's been so successful. Here's a sense of what the open space could look like. We want there to be a real civic nod to that, so there could be music, there could be performances, there could be outdoor space, but we want it to be very special and great, and celebrate the water around. So this is kind of a bird's-eye view of what it starts to look like as you, as you step back. This is a, a drawing of what, what it potentially could look like with a clear view of Revere Beach and the, on the eastern side. So I can pause it there, Counselor, and I'm happy to answer questions if, if people have that as well.
Thank you. And thank you so much for you and your team to come before us with your presentation. I think it was very informative, and I think it's great for the community to get to see some of what's going on. I'll open it up to Counselors at this time. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just like to say thank you. I have asked HYM, Tom O'Brien, Dino DeFronzo to, for a couple of things, to go forward, to be good neighbors and to just show respect to the city. And last week, they painted the fence, which was excellent. I mean, it's just a little fix, but, you know, it makes it look better along the Winthrop Ave Street. So thank you for that, and thank you. I know Richard Penta was trying to do this before I became Councilor. He was trying to get a bus stop for Beachmont to Target, and it was very difficult for him. But working with Dino, because he worked with the MBTA and you, we have achieved that. And in March, we're going to have a, a bus stop, a new bus stop from Beachmont Station to Target and Stop and Shop. So people that don't have cars, that walk that stretch, which many, many people do, in all kinds of weather, will have now a bus stop to get on at Beachmont Station and go into Target and, and Stop and Shop and do their shopping. Amatra June, okay. Thank you. Well, at least we got it. So thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that, and I, I'm sure that people do, too.
Thank you, Counselor. I would just, again, say thank you to Dino. Dino, you know how we work. We, we do a ton of work with the MBTA, but the approach that we have to the MBTA is, is obviously one of deep respect, but there's, you know, there's a group of people who will wake up every day who are thinking about the bus routes and all those things. Those aren't maybe the folks that are the most on people's minds, or they aren't the most senior people, but they're the folks who get things done, and that's, that's how we, you know, we tend to work. And on the fence, you know, as you know, we inherited that fence, and you pointed it out to us, and frankly, it was embarrassing the way it looked, and so we were, we were happy to, to take care of that and paint that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. O'Brien, I just have a couple of questions. I realize we're going to have many subsequent meetings regarding this project. The 40-plus acres in the city of Revere, what do you anticipate? How much of that do you anticipate being open space? And how much do you anticipate being residential? And how much do you anticipate being commercial shops and that type?
So in Revere, it's actually closer to 59 acres in Revere. It's, it's more than 40 acres. It's a, it's a pretty significant chunk.
That's taking into consideration, though, the, the wet area?
Yeah. I, I'd still call it 50 acres in, in general, because it, because the, those pieces will be part of the open space as well. So 25% of that, of that 50-plus acres will be dedicated to open space, which is, look at Doug, so approximately about 12 acres of, of the space in Revere will be dedicated to open space. In addition to that, the, the total amount of square footage to be built in Revere will probably end up being about a little more than five, five and a half million square feet or so in total, 50% of which will be commercial. But actually, it's a little bit more than, closer to 55% when you figure in the hotels, the innovation center, the retail, all those pieces. So less than 50% of that will be dedicated to residential. That's, that's the, that's the key piece of it for us. So it's, it's by far the largest.
About 38 acres that would be split up between commercial and residential.
Correct. Correct. The residential, the piece that I, I kind of think about from a residential number is, is, I think I have this correct, that the, that the residential units per, per acre in Revere ends up being about 52 residential units per acre in Revere, approximately, which compares to, for example, the Ocean 650 project, for example, which I think has something like 118 units per acre. So it's, because of the amount of opens, because of the size of the site that we have to work with, the number of residential units per acre is way less than some of the more recent projects that have been.
Now, on the commercial aspect, are we talking about, oh, street level or multi-level?
They're multi-level office buildings. So we, so we anticipate, whether it's Amazon or not, we, we think this site is a very special site, and we think frankly that this, this is a great opportunity for Revere to do something totally different. If you, if you just think about all the other measurements of this, when we complete this, this, this part of Revere will probably pay about $35 million in property taxes to, to the city of Revere, which I think would be certainly multiple times the, the largest current payer of, of property taxes in Revere.
You, shoot, as I misheard you, you said off, office space. You're talking about the commercial.
The commercial piece, yeah. But the whole thing is probably about $35 million.
How much, what would be dedicated to, like, shops and restaurants in that acreage?
So the shops and restaurants just in Revere, I'm going to say, maybe Doug's going to give me a little cheat sheet. So 225,000 square feet of retail. So it's, that's shops, restaurants. So again, you know, if you divide that by 5,000 or 10,000, or, that's a significant amount of shops and restaurants, which we're excited about.
Those are my only questions for now. I'm sure I'll have many more questions when we get into our future meetings.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Morbido?
Thank you. Quick question. Just want to follow up on, originally you said 300 square feet. Is that total square retail, total square footage in retail?
Total, so the total is about 500,000 between East Boston and Revere, and the Revere piece is 225, is that what I meant?
Okay, so 300 square foot footage was a overestimate.
No, no, no. 500,000 square feet of total retail across, remember, we're 60% or so in Boston, 40% in Revere.
Yeah, I got that, but originally you said 300 square feet. Five hundred, did you say 500? Okay.
Yeah.
I read, I'm sorry. I can't read or write, and I apologize. I apologize.
Wait a second. You can't look at Council McKenna for that one.
She needs to write a little neater. I apologize. I guess, I guess that's what I get for looking at our cheat sheets, but, no, this, this is a, this is a project I've been anticipating, I think, the entire community. It's a project that integrates not only senior citizens in our community, but the millennials that are going to come into our city. It's something for everyone to enjoy, between who likes to shop, who likes to listen to music, if there's concerts. I think this is something that our community has been waiting for, for a long time, and something that's going to change the image of Revere. I truly believe that.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, that's not, that's too soon, but, Counselor. Thanks, again, thank you for coming again. You know, we just had an election, and, and, you know, I'm so happy that we have you as a developer, and it's not because you're a wonderful person, which you are, but your reputation precedes you, obviously. And I even said in the TV commercial, I said that whether we get Amazon or whatever we get, we are lucky to have one of the premier developers in the country here at Suffolk Downs. I meant that sincerely. Of course, I never lie. We go through this all the time, but I am thrilled. And, and I know that your vision is based on a lot of input you've had from a lot of us and your expertise, and I couldn't be happier. And we're just, we're just eager to see this thing get going. Thank you again.
Thank you, Counselor. Because I, I think I would, I'd be obligated to say, if you, if my wife were here, she would tell you, he's got a couple of faults, believe me. There are, there are way more.
We are.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
Well, after Judge Washington, I'm gonna be able to, what's the drop dead, deadline for the Amazon proposal?
So, so we, we submitted the proposal, yeah, so we already submitted that proposal on October the nineteenth. Actually, we submitted on the eighteenth, just to be a day early. And so we're, we're in, we've, we've done that. Now, part of that is, Amazon asked for a building to be delivered by the end of two thousand and nineteen. So the filing that we've made and the work that we've done is to be prepared for the day that we believe they're gonna call us, because we don't wanna be standing still. So if they call us tomorrow, we can say, you know, we've got a, a team that's put together, we're moving forward as fast as we can, and we've got a, a project that can be permitted and approved and ready to go. So we selected a site next to Suffolk Downs Station. I think, you know, given the election and the other pieces that were happening at the time in Revere, just, we had to move, we had to make a decision and kind of move with, with one piece of it. And I think with some advice from, you know, folks in the building, that was the, that was the, that was the end result, is to, is to do that.
What's the date that they said that they would make a decision?
They didn't really tell us a date. So we hope that we'll, we'll hear from them sometime in the next three or four weeks. I would be flabbergasted if, if our region was not part of the next round of it. I think our proposal, which we did in conjunction with all of you folks, is a, is a very strong proposal. I think the region is a very strong region, so I, I, I think, you know, I would anticipate that we would be included in the next stage, and we wanna be ready for that and tell them that we can't in fact deliver the building by two thousand and nineteen.
I, I think, obviously, the proposal is being set forth, and we can't lose. And I think each and every one of us, when we had our opportunities to speak before the cameras prior to the election, stated so that we can't lose it, whatever comes out of that site.
I agree.
And certainly, your recognition of the needs of the people of Revere, and your recognition of the needs of the developers, that you've got to also provide a profit for your business. And we, I think we'll work hand in hand together. And I think, I can't wait for something to happen there, and I think it's, it's exciting for the city. I think that we, we have a lot to look forward to, because we were so discouraged after we were denied the application for racing, for a gaming facility. So now this gave us an uplift to, and what we have to do is just have broad shoulders, stay away from naysayers, and, and just grow our city like we think it ought to be grown, and, and, and keep up with the rest of the times, and not bring our city down. And again, I don't know if you were here when I, I alluded to the fact that I've been reading some articles lately, and, and I think it's an important factor of this, of commercial misuse, misuse, use, and residential uses together. I think it's, it's the way of the future, and I think every other city and town is doing so. So shame on us if we're not part of the party, you know, and, and getting to the gains, because we certainly have a better area to offer out to people to develop. And certainly with that, that beach, and the same individual that told me, well, and all the traffic and all this, he told me, he said, well, my friend told me that the beach is rundown. Well, I said, your friend hasn't been to Revere Beach lately. DCI has done an incredible job in keeping that property.
I agree.
And, and I used to go every, every year faithfully to Miami Beach, and all the hotels would have to get together and pay for the service that we're getting for free every, every day they're out there working. And so, and, and I suggest that our beach is, is as clean as Miami Beach, because it is that well cared for. And so, and with a little better environment, and with more of this kind of development going on, I think we're gonna attract a, a very nice type of pair, people that wanna enjoy the beachfront.
I agree.
I think the days of rowdism down Revere Beach is coming to a close. And, and for those folks that wanted that, and they want the, the honky-tonk places that were there, I witnessed it. I was part of it. In all true sense, I would never wanna go back to those days, because obviously, you need the National Guard and a nightly event to, to maintain the order of, with that type of entertainment. So I think we're going in the right direction, and I think we're dealing with the right people. I think your reputation precedes itself, and, and certainly, I applaud the mayor and the staff, and, and everybody who brought you to our community, and, and, and I think the counselor is working with you to the person. I mean, nothing but the greatest praise for, for you, Gino, and certainly, you're the hidden one in the whole group. And so, but that doesn't mean you're not important to us, because you are.
I know, no.
Because I noticed when, when they needed key information, they turned to you. So, okay, so they're doing a good job, but they're relying on you. So, and that, and I certainly, it's a, it's a good thing for our city. And I, I'm so thrilled to be part of it, and to, to be able to represent the, the good people of Revere again for two more years, and, and be part of the process of growing our city. And I wanna prove to them that this is, this effort is worth it. It's gonna be something good in the future. And I think we'll all be proud of it.
We agree. That's why we're the investment council.
Thanks again. Thank you for coming to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. There is no action to be taken by the City Council on this, it's just a presentation, so those will be placed on file, but since it is on the agenda, if anyone has any brief comments, I'll allow brief comments at this time.
Hi, my name is David Viglia. I live at one oh two L.A. Road, and unfortunately, I'm handicapped, okay? So I love the idea of bringing in Amazon or whoever wants to come here. But I think that maybe there should be another board meeting between y'all to see that we all get our equal fair share of employment, brought to the job, brought back from the job, equal pay, and all of that. So with that being said, do you have anything to add to that? Do you think that maybe you could elaborate on what I'm trying to say, or could you help me with this? I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, like, I mean, if, this is gonna be like, maybe fifty thousand jobs or something, I don't know, I, I, I don't know, but it's gonna be a lot of jobs. I would expect that we should get our fair share of the jobs and the transportation back and forth, and, and all of the stuff that, you know, just like ADA says, we should be able to travel from Revere all the way to San Francisco on, in a wheelchair, all, all the way to San Francisco. Well, we don't have that right now, okay? But I'm not gonna bring all that up. I'm just saying that with this particular incident, we should at least have our, you know, our fair share. Do you?
Thank you. So, um, just to clarify, I believe, some of the points, these are the developers of the project, so their tenants are not defined yet, so we don't know who the tenants will be for the commercial spaces. But of course, once we get to that point, that's something we can definitely discuss, you know, give preference to Revere residents, which I think the developers are very welcoming to the city of Revere, and very receptive to the fact that we want Revere residents working and utilizing this space, if you caught the presentation. So we can definitely look at that, and we appreciate your commentary.
Okay. And now that I've brought up the ADA and sidewalks, I mean, I think something should be, I think somewhere along the line, very shortly, somebody should have an independent contract to go out and look at these sidewalks that aren't ADA, which by federal law must be, and they're not. And I can name three streets right off the bat, if you wish me, you would, you know...
Well, we're keeping it specific to this project.
Okay.
So I think, as everyone knows, Councilor Novoseltski has been an advocate for ADA compliance for the City Council.
With all due respect to the President, I will leave it at that.
So this will definitely be something, yeah?
I won't, I won't override you on that.
This is, yeah, so that's definitely something, it's required by law. We know that their development will be compliant, and we know that Council Novoseltski will be carefully watching over that, as he does every proposal that comes before him.
Now, my last question is, can I get a date to bring a motion up for that? As an independent citizen, can I bring a motion up to, to bring forward to find out what streets are ADA and what streets aren't?
That's completely separate from this item. You can reach out to the city clerk or the city council after the meeting, but we're, we're specifically discussing this proposal, and that's a separate issue.
Well, could you tell me how I would do, go about that?
You can touch base with the city clerk or anyone on the council after the meeting would be happy to get that information to you.
One time, President, obviously.
Madam President, as a, as a point of information, our head of the Disabilities Committee, Ralph DeChico, is working on accessibility, and there's a project ongoing right now, and they are looking at your concerns. And we'll, we can talk at a later date, but this is, this is kinda away from what we're, we're dealing with right now. But we will certainly talk later on.
Is there a timeline?
So again, you can reach out to Ralph DeChico or the mayor's office or the city clerk, there's a million people that would help you on it. But we're sticking to our agenda this evening. So again, after the meeting, feel free to reach out to any of us, and we can give you exact point people to reach out to, but we're keeping to the agenda. So thank you.
Okay, with all due respect, I, I would...
Did you have any other questions regarding the proposal?
I, I would, I would promise you that every one of you would agree with me, that every person...
Sir, again, with all due respect, everyone has two minutes to speak. I've been very, very fair with this. This is not regarding the agenda. So if there's anyone else that has any questions on this item on the agenda, we'll allow that. If not, again, reach out to any of us, we'll be happy to help you, but this is just not the appropriate form for that question. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. This will be placed on file.
Council item number four, that the Director of SUDI is to appear before the City Council to discuss programs offered, the organizational chart, outreach process, and number of people served. Additionally, that SUDI updates the City Council on funding sources, what type of grants have been awarded, and that SUDI provide the council with ongoing benchmarks and outcomes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I know this was a motion by Councilor Tondo, and he is absent, and I know this is something he really wanted to be a part of. However, it's on the agenda, we're so happy that you're here, but this might be something that he may bring up after the new year, to present again before him with maybe some follow-up questions, just so he can be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
So if you wanna begin, and then we'll open up to the council?
Sure. Thanks. So I believe that this was on a PowerPoint here, but, is that good? Okay. So first, thank you for having me tonight and for your interest in learning more about the SUD office. Like you said, Councilor Tondo wasn't here tonight, and I was, I was hoping that he would be here, because this was his motion, and we put this together based on his inquiry about our office. But luckily, it will be on video, and we'd be happy to answer any questions after as well. So my name is Julia Newhall, and I'm the Director of the SUD Initiatives Office. That stands for Substance Use Disorder Initiative Office. There's some different names for it. Some people call it SUD, some people call it SUD, whatever. It's just the SUD Initiatives Office. We're located at four thirty-seven Revere Street, and Councilor Guanasso is our councilman. Thank you. We've been good neighbors, right? Yeah. And we launched in two thousand sixteen in October, and tonight I'm gonna give you kind of a breakdown of the history of the SUD-related efforts prior to our office opening, and then an in-depth overview of what our office does. And if we, if time permits, I'll be happy to answer any questions. So it's just, yeah? Great. If you can see that. So the history of Revere SUD efforts. In two thousand eight, the city of Revere was awarded the Mass Call Grant, which stands for Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning. The grant was held from two thousand eight to two thousand twelve through the Mass Department of Public Health, and it supported the implementation of an overdose prevention curriculum to educate active drug users, bystanders, and how to recognize the signs and symptoms of opioid overdose. Likewise, the city was able to fund its current drop-in center through the Mass Call Two Grant. After the grant expired, the city received the MOAPC grant, which stands for Massachusetts Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative Grant, another DPH-funded grant, which currently is, exists today within our department. This is a regional grant that the city was the lead community on, and we partner with the city of Chelsea, the towns of Saugus and Winthrop, to again address opioid overdose and prevent opioid misuse and abuse. In two thousand and ten, the Revere Fire Department went to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to request that it be part of the overdose education naloxone distribution program, and this was in response to a significant increase in fatal opioid overdoses that had been taking place. The O E N D program is a program that DPH started that basically allows harm reduction agencies to distribute naloxone, which is known as Narcan. And luckily, in Revere, our, our office is one of those, one of those sites. But for the Fire Department, prior to two thousand and ten, it didn't have naloxone, it wasn't permitted to carry naloxone on its apparatuses based on the DPH regulations. So they did an internal assessment and concluded that they were, they had a lead time of an average of four minutes compared to a Citaldo. So they were showing up at the scene of an overdose, and they were ill-equipped to actually reverse it. They went to DPH and pleaded that this was the case, and became the first in the nation to carry naloxone on all apparatuses in two thousand and ten. Since then, let's see, I think my data points with me here, they have reversed over five hundred overdoses. So that's five hundred lives in, in the interim of two thousand and ten till, till today. And since then as well, the police has also been able to carry Narcan and are working together with our office in order to ensure that, that RFD personnel and RPD personnel are equipped to deal with an overdose. Let's see. Our most recent grant, which was awarded to us in two thousand and sixteen by the Bureau of Substance Addic, they just changed their name, so I'm sorry if I get it wrong, it's, it was the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, now it's the Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, BSAS. And in two thousand and sixteen, Revere was one of ten communities selected by the state based on our overdose rates to be awarded the Partnership for Success Grant, which is aimed at preventing prescription drug misuse amongst high school age youth. So throughout this time, the city was implementing all these efforts, but really in, in silos, and didn't have a centralized location or entity to oversee all the work. So what was happening, we were seeing lots of overlap and inconsistency in terms of data collection and developing strategic plans, and how we're measuring our success and things like that. So when the mayor was running for, for office, he had highlighted that the opioid epidemic was one of his, and would be one of his administration's top priorities. And when he took office in January, we sat down, we had a discussion about how do we improve our, the existing efforts that are, that are, that take place today, but also really try to increase consistency and streamline what's in place in order to expand beyond what, what was, what we had done in the past. And so he approved us developing the SUD Initiatives Office. It, it took some time, because there was only one staff person, myself. Since then, we have hired three people. We have myself, Assistant Director Nicole Silvestri, who's here tonight, our Principal Clerk Jennifer Duggan, and our newest addition is Keryn Salemi, who's our Direct Service Coordinator. Keryn is part-time, Nicole is full-time, and Jen is full-time as well. We are entirely grant-funded, almost entirely grant-funded. Ninety-six percent of our budget is covered through grants, and it's a three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar budget. The other, the remaining four percent is covered through the municipality, and they pay for a portion of our principal clerk's salary, as well as a thousand dollars for office supplies and just general expenses, things like that. We receive our funding sources from mostly DPH, but in addition, through determinative needs funds. As well as this past year, we had been earmarked to fifty thousand dollars from the Mass Legislature for any sort of SUD-related effort that just came out of, I guess, the, the elected officials trying to lobby for, for this effort that we have today. And then we also receive monies from the, another grant that we partner with Chelsea, Revere, Saugus, and Winthrop, which is called the SAPC Grant. So we have different funding streams, but primarily it's through the Department of Public Health, through BSAS. Sixty percent of our, our funding goes to personnel, thirty percent towards programs, and ten percent towards administrative costs. In terms of how much monies we receive from each grant, the MOAPC is a hundred thousand dollars per year. As I mentioned earlier, we received that grant in two thousand and fourteen. It expires in two thousand and twenty, so we're coming up to the expiration, and so we have to start thinking about, how do we fund these types of efforts beyond the lifespan of the grant? In PFS, it's eighty-five thousand dollars per year. Determinative Needs Funds, sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and five dollars per year. We also now oversee the First Responders Grant for the Police Department and the Fire Department, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then from the state, fifty thousand, and SAPC is seventy-five hundred. So we have a, a limited budget, and, and given the, the magnitude of the issue, we try to do our best to cover as much as we can in terms of programmatic costs, and ensure that we're spending it as wisely as possible to, to, you know, expand what's in place right now. But, you know, the, the state and, hopefully, the, at the federal level, they'll continue to support this, these local efforts by providing these grants. And we've been fortunate here in Revere to have had a long history with the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services, that they look to us when these grants come out and, and hope that we will apply for them, because we've always upheld our contractual obligations and have frankly done a good job in, in implementing their activities. So our goals... If you can see that. Our goals are, our external goals, so our goals are basically broken up into two portions. External goals are more outcome-based, meaning that we assess the program's effectiveness by whether the changes were, that we had intended were actually made. And our internal goals are more process-based, so it, it looks at whether or not, how we achieved something rather than whether it was achieved. I've included examples drawn from existing programs as far as our current outcomes, but our internal goals, one of the things that we're planning right now is to develop a strategic plan for the SUD office, which will incorporate the existing programs and its outcomes into an overarching plan that will be more consistent and include all these different funding, these funding sources. So what happens in a lot of other communities, and what we've seen, you know, just working with our colleagues in other, in other municipalities, is these grants will come into a city, they will fund a certain portion of a program, and they'll hire people per grant. And the outcome is, you'll have multiple people really working on the same issue, but because the, the state requires one FTE per grant, it, it's, it's a requirement for them to do so. So what we envisioned when we opened this office was really to take all the grants and, and streamline them so that we would have a municipal strategic plan rather than a, you know, MOAPC-related plan or a PFS-related plan. And that really speaks to the, the over, the overarching goal of sustainability. So once these grants run out, these programs will still exist regardless of whether the funding is there or not. So in terms of our outcomes, by July first, two thousand and nineteen, we hope to increase access to support, so this means any type of support, by twenty percent, reduce the number of fatal overdoses by fifteen percent, and increase the number of external referrals by... and increase the number of external referrals by 20%. So I have the existing numbers here from fiscal year 2017. So in 2017, the number of people that we engaged was 783. The number of people who received naloxone and overdose education is 328. And the number of people who were referred to outside services was 392. So if you do the math, that would be 940 for the first output, 378 for number two, and 471 for number three. So we're able to gauge whether we're successful at a particular goal based on that baseline. So in the year, fiscal year 2017, for a total of, let's see, we saw and we served a total of 2,444 people. And that includes anybody who comes into our office. It doesn't have to just be a Revere resident. If a Saugus person comes in, we're not going to turn them away. But throughout the entire year, 244 people were served based on, you know, just launching this office and having an open-door policy and being accessible and available. And that's increased since we've hired our Direct Service Coordinator. We now have a support line where if you call our office and leave a message, we'll get back to you within 24 hours. And if we can't provide you the support that is needed, we'll make sure that you get it one way or another, either by working with our existing partners and outside agencies or by, you know, following up and making sure that the services that you are receiving are appropriate. In terms of our internal goals, our strategic planning process is the first thing I mentioned earlier, is the first thing we're working on. So by July 2018, we hope to have the strategic plan in place. We've already established a leadership committee, which meets on a monthly basis, and includes cross-sector leadership. We are, we've held, I think, probably three planning meetings thus far. And really, the goal of those meetings is for the group to develop its own outcomes and its own goals so that there's buy-in and that they are invested in what we're doing. And this will be, this will be something that is not just for our office, but for all the different sectors who are currently, you know, implementing different SAD-related programs. And then on an operational level, we are working with a consultant right now who is helping us develop an operational plan for our department. One of the things that, as the Director, I have, you know, inspired to do was to come up with some performance standards for our staff and invest in, you know, the process piece to this so that we're not just constantly reacting to the issue, but being more pragmatic in how we approach a situation and what that looks like. And being able to measure and track our success is important. And so we have established a date to create individual employee work plans by April of 2018 and conduct annual performance reviews. First one would be in April of 2019. And that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you so, so much for your time. This is a very informative presentation. And again, I know this was Counselor Rotunda's motion, and he does want to be a part of this conversation. So there's a very good chance this will come up again after the New Year with an update. But at this time, we'll open it up to Counselors that are present, Counselor Guanasso, and we'll work our way that way.
Certainly, the opioid seriousness that's occurring throughout the country has been addressed by the City of Revere. And I'm so proud to say that you're part of WAT-3. Not to suggest that taking place there wasn't easy. It was a role of fright by some neighbors when they saw this S U D I. And initially, I might suggest that that initial sign was kind of frightening. But then you told me, and your membership told me, that it's going to be more refined and a nice-looking area with an awning, as it appears today. But the service that you provide, and after I've told some of the educated people in the area, there are a couple of them still, you know, very, very objectionable. In fact, they had signs from my opponent on there this past year. But that's fine. As long as we know we're doing the right thing.
Right.
And you're doing the right thing. You are, I give all the credit in the world to the mayor and his staff.
Absolutely.
For putting forward a promise and a campaign. And that's a very important part of what we're all about.
Absolutely. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for him.
This isn't a political situation. This is a very serious situation. And the way we're addressing, and I don't think for certain that this city has received the recognition throughout this country that we so duly deserve, being the first in the country to administer Narcan is amazing.
It is.
And if you look further down on the motion section this evening, you'll see a motion offered out by myself giving credit to a certificate of merit to a police officer.
I saw that, yep.
And why I offered that was, the individual who was saved, his grandfather came to me and said, "My grandson would be dead today if it wasn't for the heroic efforts of this individual police officer." He had to administer twice Narcan to this individual. And there was no policy that he was, he was gone, literally gone.
Right.
And so the heroic efforts of this police officer with the assistance of the grandfather and, namely, Narcan,
Right.
saved this young man. And this grandfather was so grateful to me. And he was so grateful for the City of Revere, for the services they provide to the people and the residents of our community. To hear there are 500 overdoses in our community, that's alarming. That means that we know, if we don't know the individual afflicted by this deadly disease, we know their families.
Oh, absolutely.
So everybody has a common bond and common share in this process. This is the right thing to do, and what you're doing out of there is unbelievable.
Thank you.
And I think that making this awareness here and showing people what we're doing on their behalf is amazing. I mean, this is what we're supposed to do. You know, and everybody in, and I'm going to say, Washington and the state level, they all talk about it.
Right.
But they cut all the level of spending. They cut all the revenue going to these sources. We have provided a place, and thankfully, we have these grants coming in. But there'll be a point in time when the grants run out.
Correct, yep.
So the citizens of Revere got to be mindful of the fact, we're going to have to at some point in the future, not near future, but maybe the distant future, to pick up the cost of this. But we have to do this because that's our cause. That's what we have to do.
Right.
Would you throw somebody out that had cancer?
Absolutely not.
This is a sickness. These are good people that are getting, that are using this. This isn't bad people. This is good people.
Right.
They just took the wrong road. They just fell into a wrong situation. At that particular time, they became addicted. And, you know, this is so crucial to our society today. Once we get this under grips, and then we take on and tackle cancer, we're going to have a great country going forward. But it's for people like yourself and your staff and the people in this council that have the wherewithal to bring this to people's attention and do something about it.
Right.
Lip service is over. We need to help these people.
Yep.
And I think that that little office on Revere Street, it caused a lot of phone calls to me. And, you know, we were brave, and I went right to you.
You did.
And Nicole was there. You know, we weathered this together, you know. And I was making those statements on that day, and I knew there were people...
You knew there were I and you.
There was, yes. I knew it. But you know what? When I look in the mirror, I said, "You did the right thing, Art." You know, you stood for what was right.
Right.
You know, sometimes people lose sight of the fact, what is right and what is wrong. This is right. You're saving 500 overdoses? That's insane. To see this grandfather talk to me this past week, you know, it's heartbreaking.
Of course.
And this, he says, "Please, please do this. This is the least I can do to give recognition to this police officer." So that's one incident.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's one. Multiply that through all the rest. These are people we're talking about.
People's lives.
And they're good people. They're not bad people.
Right. And I just want to say that we focus a lot on the overdose piece too, but it's important to, you know, note that hope is possible and that, you know, you're, we give them an opportunity to hopefully get on their path, whatever that may be, kind of meeting them where they're at, but that recovery is possible.
If we shut the door, we're doing a disservice to ourselves and them.
Yes.
And so our generations in the future might be saved because of the actions we take today. And I thank you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I just want to say thank you, Julia, for the informative presentation because I really didn't know what you guys did. I had a little bit of knowledge, but now I have a better understanding of what you do. And I just want to give the Revere Fire Department kudos for reversing 500 lives. I just think it's wonderful, and the Revere Police too. But when you mentioned that the Revere Police, the Revere firefighters reversed 500 overdoses, that's remarkable in four years. So just kudos.
Actually, 2010, so seven years.
Oh, seven years, but still.
But no, it's, yeah.
500 lives, this 500 lives, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Yeah, you appreciate all that they do, and they're on the front lines of this epidemic every day, so.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbeto.
Thank you. Thank you for a great presentation. Most importantly, I want to thank your department for creating awareness. You're bringing a lot of knowledge to those people out there who didn't know which, what your department did.
Right.
And knowledge is power, and it's giving people the power to fight addiction. And as, like my colleague said, cancer, it's a disease, and this is what it is. And every little bit of awareness we can get out there is more power we're giving to the people, more resources. And we need to give out these, give these resources to the people and let them be available. Let them know they're not alone. Let them know there's a place to go to, to fight this.
Right.
And that means a lot to so many people who aren't here, who aren't able to be in this council room because they're helping a family member fight this disease. So on behalf of them, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Madam, what are you, what is your title? Julie, I thought, talking to you earlier, I thought you'd be nervous. You, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
And I thank you for it, that the knowledge that you put out tonight, it was just, it was just great. And anybody that doubts what your organization does, shame on them. I know personally, for years, the people who work with you, and I know, I'm a witness to their resonates. I know the good they do. And I just, you know, it's, we got to keep the politics out of this.
Absolutely.
One of my many things that the WAT-3 Counselors said, just said. But I'm going to keep it a little briefer. But I just want, you know, and again, I thank the police and the fire for what they do because, as you know, I was a police officer. And when I, I was before Narcan, Narcan, and I witnessed on calls, I just one, I'll just bring up one incident of a family that I knew three times, and we hadn't, we just didn't have the tools, you know. And the third time was unsuccessful. And we tried the best we could, but this is amazing today. And thank God for Chief Dougherty, we should mention him. It was all, and Lieutenant Picarello for thinking about this.
Right.
And so again, keep up the good work. And I tell you, if I'm still around or still sitting here, if these grants run out, I'll be fighting to get the money to keep you guys going.
Thank you.
And just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we can get some more grants and hire some more staff for you.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors Yemuro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you for your presentation, and it's very nice, very nicely done. I want to thank you and your staff for all you do. And I think a lot more people now know what you do, which is great. You know, I was proud to be on this council when we helped firefighters be able to administer Narcan. And now the police also do it. So I want to thank the first responders because they're the ones that are out there actually saving lives. And it's a collaborative effort.
Absolutely.
It's great that, you know, the awareness today is, you know, I've been helping people for a lot of years in recovery, and I know how far we've come, and it's wonderful. And it's great that people now know there is a place to go, there is a place to get help. And when, it's not just that the first responders are saving them, but then they're guiding them to you.
The follow-up piece.
It's the follow-up that gets people on the right path to recovery.
Absolutely.
So again, thank you and everybody involved with you, and especially the first responders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may speak from the chair, I think this is a phenomenal department, and you guys do such amazing work. And as my colleagues mentioned, this is a program that Chief Dougherty started. And something so important about this is, is the follow-up that my colleague mentioned. Chief Dougherty started a program that after the reversal happens, firefighters in now your office will actually go out to that person and reach out after the fact. So the, it doesn't end at that point.
Right.
There's a follow-up and there's a continuation that Chief Bright has helped with, as well as your office, that many communities don't do. And that's, that's really the difference because there can be a situation where someone overdoses multiple times. But in Revere, we have that intervention that we get right away to help the family and to help the person. And I think that's so, so important to note that service because that's something that you can't put a value on. It's amazing.
Right.
And something else to note is that, you know, we talk about the reversals and the people that overdose, but think about how many people this program helped before they got to that point. Hundreds of families and hundreds of people that because of this office and because of the programs of our police and fire department in this office, never got to that point. So I think that's fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments. Anyone else?
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just wanted to go up and thank you publicly and just say thank you so much to you, your office, and our first responders for all the work that they do in saving 500 lives over seven years. That's tremendous. I've also had some feedback from some friends who are former addicts and some things I'd like to say. One is a recovered addict, and he now has a family, and he's a father, and he's doing extremely well. He recommended perhaps exploring a mentorship program. I'm not sure if that's something on your docket, but...
No, no, it's something on our radar.
I promised him I'd pass the word along, so I had the opportunity.
No, any suggestions we'd love to, just to know.
If you would come up to the mic just so the public can hear too. Thank you.
If you do have any suggestions for people at home, you can email us at sudi@revere.org. So sudi@r-e-v-e-r-e.org. Or you can call us at 781-629-4158. That's also access to the support line, where if you just press four, you can leave a message, and we will return your call in 24 hours. Or if you have suggestions and feedback like this gentleman here, please feel free to, you know, pass them along because we're always looking for input from residents. So thank you.
And again, just one other suggestion, or actually a question, rather. You mentioned that your group does Narcan training.
We do.
How much does that cost per person for the public? I'm just interested personally, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we do what is called, we're an overdose education naloxone distribution site, and there's a few of them across the state in Revere. We're one of them. We're lucky to be one of them. That program itself is primarily aimed at active drug users or bystanders, so people, their family members who would, are likely to witness the overdose. But if you come into our office on a Tuesday night, anytime from 5:00 to 8:00, we have our drop-in center available and community health workers available who can provide an overdose education prevention training. And then they can help you access naloxone through the pharmacy because now all, you know, all pharmacies carry naloxone. And if you have insurance, it's a small copay. And if you have insurance, it's a, it's a small copay. So, please come in, and we'll help you navigate that, whatever you need.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pat Melchiano, Sagamo Street. I was one of the first ones to welcome town, since I live around the street. And it's one of my favorite subjects. And I've debated it with Julia and Gary Langus. And I voted no with the marijuana, but after talking to Julia many times. And I'm a cod-carrier in marijuana, even though I don't smoke it. But knowledge is power, like you say. And Julia once said to me, with regard to overdose, "Yeah, but we really do need to get marijuana." What did we do? We legalized it in Revere, because wouldn't you rather have it know that it's not laced with fentanyl? And she got me. So, I still don't smoke it, but I know everything about it. And because I'm so OCD, I've visited many dispensaries. And I've volunteered to Patrick and everybody once we get up and working in Revere, because I know too much about all the strains and everything now. And there's some really, really classy joints. I went to that one in Brookline. Is that beautiful? That's a bank that they redid, and all the, all the tele sites. And, and we have this stigma in our mind that somewhere down a railroad avenue, it's going to be a joint, and it's going to be ugly, and it's going to be that stigma in Revere. And it doesn't have to be. I still don't want to legalize heroin, but you got me on the marijuana. And thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will place this on file, and again, I'm sure we'll come up again after the new year, so Counselor Rotundo can be a part of the conversation and update on the issue. So thank you for your time.
Calendar item number five is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, actually, this evening. We had a meeting early this evening, the Committee on Ways and Means. And as many may or may not know that there are certain employees in the city of Revere who are not part of the union. And when it comes to percentage pay raises, like all employees get when they are negotiated with the mayor, these employees do not fall under that umbrella. So what we did this evening, we voted to approve parity for these employees with the other city employees who will be getting a percentage raise. And that was voted unfavorably by the Ways and Means Committee, and it'll be going for a vote now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Madam Clerk, so this will be ordered on a second reading, ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call on engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance relative to certain persons not represented under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 150E, Section 10. This is also known as the Parity Salary Ordinance. Counselor Quinasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novosinski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Vice President Keith is absent. And Chairman Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been approved.
Can we suspend rules to take up reconsideration?
Yes.
Yep. Oh.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor McKenna's vote will be recorded as yes.
On suspension of rules?
On.
On reconsideration with hopes that it does not prevail. All in favor? So moved. Back to the regular order of business.
Onto the billboard ordinance and zoning Subcommittee Reports.
All right. So this evening, the zoning Subcommittee Subcommittee on Billboards met earlier today. We went over some final revisions of the first draft of the ordinance that Paul Capizzi and Frank Stringi have worked on with members of our committee. Mr. Champeau and Frank Stringi will be working a little bit more, driving around the community to identify some challenged areas and some billboards. After that takes place, we're going to reconvene to make our final recommendations. And then the city solicitor will present it to several more attorneys to review. And that will hopefully go to the City Council shortly after. But I really want to thank Carol Haney and Ron Champeau for their hard work. They've worked greatly with the council and this committee to get this moving. The next item on the agenda is the zoning Subcommittee's report. The zoning Subcommittee met earlier this evening, and we discussed several items on the agenda. However, two voting members in the committee, Counselors Rotundo and Keith, were not present. Therefore, all five items will be held to another meeting, which will take place on December 18th at 5:30. However, lengthy discussions were held tonight. So a lot of the concerns and questions were brought up. The presentations were made. So, and again, my apology, it'll be December 18th at 5:00 PM. We'll go over any final questions, comments, concern, and allow those two voting members to speak. And any residents that have any concerns on any items to speak, and they'll be taken up that evening.
Calendar item number six, communication from the Director of Veterans Affairs, requesting that the City Council establish a revolving fund for the Veterans Service Office.
Mr. Celeste.
Good evening. Mark Celeste, 198 Southern Street, Director of Veterans Affairs. First, I'd like to take a moment and congratulate you all on reelection. I look forward to working with you all for the next two years and bettering the lives of veterans of the community. For the past 10 months, I've had the pleasure of working here in the city as the Veteran Service Officer and supporting veterans and their families. And I stand before you tonight to ask you to approve a revolving account to the Veteran Service Office. The account will start with $2,425 that we've received in donations. And at no time or any fiscal year will the account go over $12,000. The reason for me coming and asking for this account is, is more to secure donations that we've received in the past. I'm not sure if the council knows that in the past, any donation that has been sent to Veterans Department directly goes into the Veterans Affairs account, but at the end of fiscal year, gets rolled into the bottom line of the city's budget. So anything that was sent to the Veterans Office for veterans could end up anywhere throughout the city. It does not allow us to maintain that donation. The reasons for this, since taking the Veterans Office Director position, we've started a wheelchair program in the city. I do have an account at Batteries Plus, holds minimal money, but the only thing I can gain from that is, is batteries for wheelchairs. The revolving fund will give me the ability to cosmetically fix pads, armchairs, wheels if needed, chargers, and whatnot, as well as have emergency fund on a, on an emergency basis, if we need to help a veteran beyond what the state law allows me to, or what the city has in, in their fund. This will give me the ability to go above and be, above and beyond that. That's really all I have tonight. I thank you for your time in allowing me to present this motion. Have a great evening and the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mark, I think you're doing a wonderful job. I know you, you told me not to tell you every time I see you, but for the last 10 months, you've done a wonderful job. I've never seen anybody so dedicated to their job, their title, and to the veterans of, you know, Revere and, and other places. I'm totally in favor of this. If I could give you more than $12,000, I would. But if you're asking for $12,000, I think it's a great start, and maybe we can increase it in the future. But I'm totally for this. And thank you for coming up and doing a great job.
This is a, I'm not asking for $12,000. I'm, I'm just asking for the account to be revolving, and at no time will it go beyond $12,000. But if you would like to give me $12,000, I'd be more than happy to accept it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novosinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally support this. As a matter of fact, about four, five months ago, I encouraged Mark to, you know, go through this route. Having seen what happens with some of the monies that are donated to the accounts and to the departments, it bothered me. And a lot of the funds are going into the general fund, and it's difficult for Mark and his staff to get that money out of the general fund, you know, through, you know, through the auditor and purchasing and stuff like that. So, you know, this makes things a lot easier. We have many other departments that have revolving accounts that are worthy. This is worthy. And, you know, I'm glad he did it. And I know a lot of donations that he has been getting. And, you know, we've addressed them. You know, now we won't have to anymore.
Exactly.
So, you know, I know we, I can get him the donations from the various organizations around the city, and we know we're going to go to the veterans 100%. So, we're looking forward to that, and good things from you, Mark.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Counselor. I was unaware of this. I, I'm glad you brought it in front of us tonight. Whatever is donated to the veterans should stay with the veterans. And I am definitely in favor of it, and I hope we can, I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to get passed tonight. Thanks for, and also thanks for the good job that you're doing, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, I, I think this is a great idea. You know, I just, we just recently approved a fund for, I don't know if it was a library, maybe, and I know the Recreation Department has one. And I can't think of any department more worthy of a revolving account, because there are people that come in there on a daily basis. For some reason, they're up against it. They've served their country. And in my opinion, those are the first people that should be considered for help. And I had fellows, I mentioned you earlier tonight, I had a fellow call me down on Revere Street, and he has a brand-new wheelchair and some other equipment that he wants to, he was looking to donate it to the city of Revere. And, well, it's not cash. It, it certainly is expensive equipment, and I know that it'll get in the right hands. And I intend to support this this evening. It's, once again, it's a very important thing for your department, and, and you do a tremendous job down there, because I'm in there several times a week through that building, whether in the building department or something. But I always see you in the office there, doing what you're doing best. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, I don't know if I, I know I've told you privately that I think you're doing a great job, but I want to say publicly here tonight that you are doing a great job, and we're happy to have you in this position. I don't see any way that any donation for Veterans Services should ever be rolled into anything but Veterans Services. So if we can do this tonight, I'm certainly in favor of it, and I'll be more apt to donate money, knowing it's not going to be rolled into, to the, not against the general fund, it's just, if I'm donating money to the veterans, I want it to go to veterans. But thank you for your service, and we are lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor Quinasso.
Thank you. Certainly, the accolades are well-deserved. We celebrate and honor our veterans twice a year, primarily Memorial Day and Veterans Day. But on those occasions, we're doing all the accolades, and we're doing all the praising, and, and, as we so should do. But we never talk about money on those days. And this is an opportunity to talk about money, to, to really help the veterans. And there aren't very, very many areas where the veterans do receive financial resources from a lot of different areas where they could be getting it from. And so, again, it's just so, the deserving several get it, and the deserving few never get it. And, and so, the undeserving, I should say, get it, and the deserving few don't get it. And that's the way society's been built. That's the way it goes, you know? You don't work a day in your life, and you get all these things. You get Section 9, you get WAFI, you get all this other, Section A, whatever it is. You get all these benefits, but when it comes to the veterans, they come back with a limb loss, and a life, and all this, and their life's destroyed forever. And we don't have the financial resources to take care of these heroes. And, and this is small, small potato. We got to come up with some sort of revenue-generating source to get more money. And you're talking about a $12,000 budget ceiling. That should be $120,000.
Just looking for the first step.
Yeah, baby steps. But I'm just saying how deserving it is of our veterans, so we financially take care of them. And initially, years back, it used to be that the Housing Authority was for veterans only. Veterans can't even get in there now, because it's all crowded with different people that really shouldn't even be there, some of them.
Off-subject, but just on, on Veterans Housing, myself and James Malazano, I probably just hacked his name, but.
Malazano, yeah, he's a good guy.
The head of, head of housing have put together a proposal for HUD-VASH. We've just, were granted from Bedford VA to coordinate and partner with Revere Housing Authority. My office, as well as the SOT office, and the Revere Housing Office collaborated, and with a letter of each, and the letter from the mayor's office, we've made it to at least the next step. So, we're trying for this next delivery of vouchers to get 12 to 18 vouchers in the city. In the last year, and since I've taken the position, we've housed seven veterans in our housing.
That's great.
It is. The bad part, not one was from the city of Revere.
Oh.
So, there, there is still ways to go, and, and there is still things that need to be fixed. But we're on our way, and I appreciate your, your support tonight.
The past several months, I might add, that I've worked with Jim, and he's a great guy to work with. You know, we had some crime going on there, and some bad things happening. And he was quick to, you know, meet with me. I met with the police and detectives, and we worked out a plan. But this guy wants to get involved.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, Mark, you're going, you've got a good partner over there, and I think he's going to be beneficial to the veterans.
Absolutely.
Good. I think it's a great move.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I might change my vote when it comes to January 1st, you know?
Did you have your Wheaties this morning?
Patrick's looking better every day.
Counselor Morbido.
Wow. Whoa. Let's get back to business here. So, so, thank you for all that you do. You know, each day, every day, you know, there's someone on the US military force on those front lines, protecting our country, ready to fight so we can have the freedoms we have. And then you have our veterans, who've been there, done that. Some still fighting and on that battlefield today. You have family members, friends of a veteran. Their intention, when they give that donation, is to go to the cause of someone who's fighting for our freedom, someone who's putting their life on the line. And as Counselor Patch said, you know, it's donated to the veterans, it should stay with the veterans, because that's what the intentions is. The intention of that donation is for the veterans, and why not have a revolving account? The intention of that donation is for the veterans, and why not have a revolving account? It shouldn't go back into the general fund.
Thank you, Counselor.
So I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since Counselor Guanasso brought up about housing, just so everybody knows, if anybody's been down Shirley Ave. lately, they've noticed some major construction going on to Conner and Shirley Ave. and the Ant Ave., where the synagogue used to be. Well, the plan there is to build 30 units of veterans' preference housing, along with some commercial on the first floor, you know, and I'm proud to have worked with Mark and various other community leaders to make this happen. You know, that was my dream, and the building will house some paraphernalia and keepsakes from the synagogue in the facility, and the Veterans Memorial that was outside will be placed back on the site. So we're looking forward to that. Hopefully, next year at this time, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting.
Thank you for your hard work on that, too. I know that was your place of worship as a child, and to keep it in something that's dear to your heart now is pretty special, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselors. And if I may briefly, I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. You do a phenomenal job. That's an understatement. And I think that this is a great catch on your part to catch this and make a change in it, because I think that a lot of people may not have known that. I know I didn't know that. So it's great to know that when you make a donation, it's going where your heart put it. So thank you very much. At this time, I'll order this to a roll call.
Shall the city council approve the establishment of a revolving fund not to exceed $12,000 for the Veterans Affairs Office? Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo is absent. Counsel Vice President Keefe is absent, and Chairman Gino.
Yes.
Yes, the revolving fund has been established. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Morabito that the mayor provide a police officer at city council meetings during public hearings.
Counselor.
Thank you. You know, I think lately, sometimes at the council meetings, we tend to get a little heated, sometimes in the audience, sometimes us. I think it's very important to have some police presence to bring the calm to the room. I think, not only for that, but for people who want to voice their opinion and come to the council chambers, at least they know there's some type of security in here, being our ears and eyes when one auto able to control the meetings. So with that being said, I hope my colleagues will vote in favor of this. Once again, this is only during public hearings.
Thank you, Counselor. Any of my colleagues? Retired Officer Counselor Patch?
Oh, by the way, nothing against our retired officer, Counselor Patch.
Thank you. I personally would rather see the police officer out on the street, to tell you the truth, but I think we do a good job trying to, even in the most rowdy situations here. In my 10 years, I think we've functioned without an incident. I know, huh? But, you know, I just don't, I don't know. I don't, I think he's probably needed more out in the street. If we have a, maybe if we limit that to a controversial issue that's coming up or something that we feel that there might be an incident, that we could get the chief, call the chief and have him have an officer here. I don't think, I don't think we need one for every public hearing. That's my personal opinion. No offense, Counselor, it's a good, I know what you're thinking of, but, like I say, in 10 years, we haven't really had, and I think they had a couple incidents before I got on the council, and the police had to come, but in my 10 years, they never, they never came. But again, if you feel that an incident, a hearing's coming up that's going to be controversial and might present some danger to the people that participate, I would be for that, but I don't think we need them at every hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
I think that what Counselor Patch stated is obviously correct. Based on 30 years of service here, I've never had a situation, maybe once, that we had to have a police officer, and we could call them in a minute's notice, and they should be here within two minutes. If we have a situation where we feel it's going to be very contentious, then we can take that liberty and ask for there to be a police presence. But as far as having a police officer appear during public hearings, I'd rather see them out doing the service for the community out in the street, and it's justified. I think, you know, you want to eliminate some of those things, Counselor Morabito, but I certainly don't think it's a good use of taxpayer money for allowing a police officer to sit here during a public hearing, because most of the people during public hearings are yawning, so they're not really contentious. It's just very few, very few public hearings that are contentious, and so, again, I don't think it's worthy of tying up resources in this type of effort.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with your generalization, Counselor Morabito, but I tend to agree with both Counselor Patch and Guanasso. I, you know, in my 16 years I've been up here, I believe, I remember twice that we've had police officers needed, you know, for crowd control. We never had any incidences, but just having them present and realizing, too, that, you know, we're not really taking them off the street, they're on detail if they do that. So, and having them every single public hearing, I think would be, I think abusive, but I think as needed at the call of the chair, knowing that we have some serious situations, potential serious situations, I think that's, you know, that's when we should do it. So I'd like to amend it and just make it at the call of the chair.
Counselor Morabito.
Thank you. First, to be, you guys being a little contentious, but to think that I want to take a police officer off the street, if that's my intention, to twist what I'm trying to say is, I think, uncalled for by my colleagues. I think right now, like my colleague said, they're doing detail, there's stop and shop, there's marshals, there used to be staples, they were all doing details, they're off the street, they're still going to be getting paid. And you know what? I think the question should be, if we don't have enough cops on the street, maybe we should be hiring more. I know we have another eight, possibility of eight being interviewed, but that is not my intention to take a cop off the street. So to twist this narrow, you've been here 10 years, Counselor Patch, you've been here 16 years, and you've been here 30. How many times have you experienced a tornado? Who said a tornado would come down the center of Broadway? So what I'm saying is, the uncalled, unforeseen incidents occur constantly. For you guys to react when something goes wrong, I don't think is correct either. So I'm fine with the amendment, but I just want to make my point clear. I feel like my motion was twisted into saying that I didn't want a police officer on the street, that I'd rather take a street, police officer off the street.
Point of information.
And put them in the council chambers.
State your point, Counselor.
I don't know how you got to that point. I mean, I, I'm sorry if I offended you, Stephen, but I really, I was asked a question, and I gave my honest opinion. I mean, I wasn't.
Point of information, you weren't asked a question.
But I mean, are you, are you saying that you want to hire a detail? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if needs be, why not? They're going to be paid when they're in here, correct?
It's a minimum of four hours.
Okay, Counselors, we're not going back and forth on this.
Counselor Patch, the police officers in here will be paid regardless.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is really getting out of control. I know in the past, there is, it always has been at the call of the chair, if there was an incident about to happen, there was always a phone there in the past for the, and I don't know if, pick up the phone, 911, get somebody up here. And I think most times, if there is any, you can anticipate that. I think to pay somebody to sit here during a meeting would be just insane. I just can't see it. With all due respect, Counselor, I think there are more important things out on the street that have to be dealt with than in the city council chamber with regard to crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
No, I'm not going to pile on. I think we got the message, you know? I've been here 20 years. We've never had need for a police officer, and we've had some contentious meetings, but all it is, is a little shouting and then goes away. Never any violence or anything. And like all my colleagues said, we just pick up the phone, they're here in two minutes if we really need a police officer. And let's hope we can be civil enough that we don't need a police officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I think that this was a very well-intended motion by my colleague, Counselor Morabito, so we know your heart was in the right place, and I hope that didn't get miscommunicated, because we know that. And I hope that Counselor Patch would spring into action if need be, so I have faith in my colleagues. At this time, we'll vote on this motion as amended by Counselor Nowosowski during public hearings at the call of the chair. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Zambudo.
I'd just like to recognize our newest commissioner of disability, Bob Bent, who happens to be in the audience tonight.
Good call, Counselor. Thank you for that. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the city council award a certificate of merit to Officer Mike Travado for saving the life of a young man who overdosed early Saturday morning, November 25, 2017.
Counselor Guanasso.
Madam President, I spoke earlier on this, and, you know, the sentiment is I will save my comments for the night of the dedication.
Thank you, Counselor. Any of my colleagues like to speak? I think this is great, we'll save our comments for the night of that. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the traffic commission to establish resident parking on the entire length of Dun Road and amend the resident parking in Shawman Street to include it as the entire length.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this motion is necessary. We had a lot of conversation up here this evening about parking at new developments, and I see every day people coming into the city to get to that MBTA station at Wonderland that don't even live in the city, parking there and displacing residents who do. So I would hope that the traffic commission would establish those two streets fully resident parking only. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Anybody else?
1143 Tapley Avenue. Counselor Powers, I just want to commend you for this motion. I think it's a good motion, and I would also ask the, ask the traffic commission to consider some enforcement for residents or non-residents, rather, taking the illegal left turn from the northbound side of North Shore Road onto Shawman Avenue. I've been contacting 311 services, and they've been very responsive, and I know it got better for a little while, but I think it's time for some more enforcement on folks taking that illegal left turn on Shawman. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a little bit of a separate issue, but we can definitely discuss that with the traffic commission and put in a recommendation for it. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There's no further business. This concludes the meeting of December 4th. The city council will meet again on December 11th at 6:00 p.m. in this chamber. Thank you, and have a great night.